But yes, there we go.
All right, this is the regular meeting of the New Britain Borough Council through the April 12th, two thousand twenty-two. Prior to this, we had a executive session and discussing properties, real estate, and other matters. All right, so. The, do we do a roll call, Amanda?
Sure. Um, Jessica Ellis-Barron here, Robin Kellman here, Peter Longmonte.
Here.
John Blunt.
Here.
Lori Cuffin here, Lauren Frasco here, Steve Asher.
Here.
James Sattler.
Here.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda items. Firstly, March 8th, two thousand twenty-two minutes, the bill's list for March 2022. Approval for transfer of funds from the New Britain Borough Non-Uniform Pension Fund to the Central Bucks Non-Union Pension Fund in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. The appointment of Yuri Keepitz to the Planning Commission for the term ending two thousand and twenty-three. Appointment of Colin McJirk to the Planning Commission for terms ending two thousand twenty-four. An appointment of Michael Stanslott to the Planning Commission for the term ending in two thousand and twenty-four. And lastly, first lease amendment for Ken Miller from March 26th, two thousand twenty-two to March 25th, two thousand twenty-four, at one seventy-one, Aaron's Avenue. Do we have any questions or discussion?
So you have the three appointments to the Planning Commission. Yuri and Colin were vetted by the Equipment Advisory Committee several weeks ago. They both had positive recommendations. Uh, Michael Stanslott was already on Planning Commission, which is why you don't have any other information on him. Um, he wanted to be reappointed and uh, we just didn't get him on the January appointment. So we are just basically fixing that one because his term had ended in December. Um, as far as the pension transfer, back when the police departments were, we merged all of our police departments, all of the uniform pensions went over and all the funds. Uh, we have, that's the remaining amount for the one actual non-uniform employee that we sent. So they were waiting to have the state do their audits and basically tell them how to set up the non-uniform plan. So now they've been through two audit cycles with other pension plan. Now our audit advisors are comfortable and as are theirs, the same company to do both pension plans that transferring this amount of money based on the beactureil said to the, for this person. So if one employee's benefit, basically, um, there's no cash transfer or anything out of any of our funds. It's all strictly going from our pension plan to the non-uniform pension plan for Central Bucks Regional Leasings because that employee now works for them, so her money needs to properly follow her.
Then we'll close out that issue.
Yeah, I'll close out that issue. We will no longer, uh, everything that initially will be transferred and merged as far as the pension plans and everything with the lease.
Any other?
The other, the lease agreement, um, it was time to redo, um, Ken Miller's lease. So the calculation is based on the Wilmington, Philadelphia, Camden CPI calculation. So Mike Peters and I both did the calculation, then we asked Steve Asher to verify all of our math. So the number that you have in front of you has been calculated and confirmed three times over. Let's be accurate.
Uh, the, the, the new lease amount moving forward is one thousand one hundred, one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents.
For the garage? For the house. Don't you think that's kind of low?
There's, there's no choice, that you don't have an option. So when the lease was, when the lease was initially executed, there was a thousand dollar amount that, that each time you renew is every three years, we do the, the same calculation every time. Uh, and, and this time that, that results in one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents.
In, in essence, as a, uh, lowering the price for the house, it in effect had the borough financing it over the terms of, of the lease. It was worked out so that the Growner Fund received as much income from the house as it would have if it had been, uh, put into a, uh, normal long-term bonds.
He's got a good deal.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
You have your hand up.
Yeah, I'll be marked. Take your marks.
I almost have to go.
No, no, we still have.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We'll get you.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, any other comments on the consent agenda? Uh, hearing none, do I have a motion to pass said, uh, consent agenda items?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. All right, now we have resident remarks.
I'd like to thank, uh, Borough Council for your improvement on the barricade on Matthews Avenue.
Can you state your name for the reference?
My name is Al Martiani, ninety-nine Matthews Avenue. Uh, so far, nobody's driven through it. That being said, uh, those wrong directions through street signs on Matthews Avenue would be really great if you took them down because last week I witnessed three vehicles together flying down the street. When they found out that the barricade was there, they'd come back even faster back down the street. So that kind of presents a safety problem. Those signs are the wrong direction on Matthews Avenue. So it would be nice if you took those two signs down. I don't know why they're still there because they're going in the wrong direction.
What was the sign?
The street, they're called Three Street.
Oh, this one.
There's an arrow and a circle, it was wrong direction.
All right, let's take a look at them.
What do you have, what do they call it, circle or?
Loop, uh, loop street, loop street.
Loop, loop street. I think they didn't sell it the other way.
I'm sure you're aware of the, uh, potholes on Woodland Avenue.
Yes, we were trying to get cold patch, but unfortunately it is very hard to get cold patch.
Thank you, yeah, I'm probably pretty busy right now. Thank you.
Any other resident remarks? Jeff?
Uh, Jackie D'Agostino, thirty-four South Tammany Avenue, Britain. Uh, here on behalf of Shade Tree. Um, it was brought to our detention, attention that, uh, there's, was some mulching done on the islands, the trees, the islands that was a little not with, uh, consistent with our technique that we would prefer, but I hear it's been corrected. So I wanted to thank you all for taking care of that for us on our behalf. Uh, the other thing is, I want to mention that, um, before the next council meeting, uh, next month, we will be planting a tree in the front of this building, uh, for Arbor Day. We're taking liberty with extending the date of Arbor Day, uh, so we can have, um, the council attend that, um, with us. And, Marj, did you want to talk anymore about the tree?
Um, I'm Mar Jever's, uh, and I'm at, uh, fifty-four Leopros Road, New Britain. And, um, the tree that we have selected is a, um, a red bud. And it, it blooms in the spring and, uh, it likes partial shade. And we picked it out because it is a native tree and it is one you should consider for your, uh, properties. And we will have also, as I have some books to give out to council members for, um, if you have any idea that you might want to put a tree in your yard, front or back. Uh, this book is put out by the Department of, um, Natural Resources. And, uh, most, with, with the exception of three trees that are marked in the book as non-native, they're all native and they give their height and width and, uh, good characteristics. So I hope, uh, seeing everybody there and, uh, help us celebrate Arbor Day.
When the book is released, please.
What was the date and time?
On the next council meeting.
It's before our meeting.
It's ten o'clock.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Yep, we're gonna have it right before the meeting. Yep, seven PM out front. Bring family, bring friends. I think is the newsletter going out, Amanda?
It'll be going out April fifteenth.
Okay, all right, so we've got it, so we have an article in there.
I approve for the time. Yeah, it was a nice idea.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, for showcasing the building.
We wanted to have it. We wanted to have it about seven o'clock and, uh, so that it's still light. And, uh, and you're gonna have to be here anyway. So you can't say you can't come.
Thank you, any other resident remarks? All right, hearing that, uh, the next item is written. We do have written staff reports and elected official reports, uh, starting with managers' reports.
Um, so you all have my written report. Uh, we should be getting started very shortly on the Butler Avenue sidewalks from Keely Avenue up to the Four Funeral Home. We just finally got the last of the easements with that, so that should be starting within the next few weeks once we finish and get that, once we get our pen down for it, that's all we're waiting for right now. Um, so that, this would be great. Uh, we are finalizing the newsletter that we sent the printed version to the printer today to mail out. And the, um, electronic version, which is going to look, as it has that vastly different from the printed version, will be sent out on April fifteenth via, um, our Ready Box account where we send out all the agendas and everything else. It'll also be posted on the website. Um, as a reminder, if anybody would like a hard copy of the newsletter, please, uh, let us know so that we can add you to the list to make sure that we mail out a hard copy to you as well as the electronic copy.
Um, and that's kind of all the highlights if anybody has any questions.
Well, you're talking about, uh, electronic things. How many, um, people have or institutions have asked for a copy of our newsletter electronically?
Um, we are sending out the full list. It's over, I think somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand people are on the full list. As far as the paper copies, we've only had, I think it's twenty people who are cost paper copies still.
Fifteen hundred is a lot of people. All right, and next, uh, the police department reports. Captain?
Uh, relatively uneventful month. In for New Britain, I think there's a total three hundred some incidents. Not dispatch, but the whole of, all around. Uh, so nothing really spectacular for that. As far as, um, I think last month, Chief was here, I've heard. We were in the process of getting accredited. Um, that happened a week after the meeting, we did pass that accreditation.
Congratulations.
Officially, um, will be recognized in.
July.
May. Yeah. Whatever that water park is.
July.
Alaharders or, or the next police chiefs meeting is in Pennsylvania, um, to get our official award. We're not officially accredited yet until we actually get that recognition on that date, um, but we did pass the process, so.
You're gonna decal cars up? Because I know they give you decals.
Yeah, yeah, we can't do anything until that date, yeah, so. So we're not, we passed, we're not officially accredited yet.
Congratulations.
Is that why they didn't mention you and the girls?
Probably, yeah, because they can't, we can't say we're accredited yet. Um, because officially, we're not.
So I was looking for your name.
We passed the process, but, um, they can't, can't say we are until we have that. That was a huge undertaking. We did pass it with, uh, very little issues, so.
Congratulations.
Um, let's see, any other elected official comments or reports? Uh, hearing none. Uh, committee activity review, questions and announcements?
Just, I'm sorry, just, just a few things there. Public safety, still looking into streetlights in the borough, stay tuned, more information to follow. CBC Committee, Community and Business Committee, planning for the second annual Car Show Scarecrow Festival. It was a success by all accounts last year, so we're looking forward to year number two. And then the three of us sitting here on March twenty-fourth went to the Bucks County Boroughs Association meeting at the North Valley Country Club. And it was interesting to meet other elected officials and just talk. And then there was somebody who outlined for over an hour all the legislation that's being considered, uh, in Pennsylvania. Personally, I was happy to hear that the, um, legislation for quorums is being considered. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, we were not alone in thinking that we should be able to have people count towards a quorum if they call in. The law is currently written, as most of you know, says you also have to be present, which we and many other municipalities felt doesn't make sense in the twenty-first century. People not feel well, people sick, why can't they stay home and call in? So the bill has an official number, which I forget, but it still has to go through a lot of committees yet before it gets a vote. So I'll keep everybody posted on that.
I, I think as far as, um, Birdtown, Tom, who's the chair, it's yours. Do you want to speak about Birdtown, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I'm here representing the Birdtown Committee tonight. Does anybody have this handled?
Yes.
Um, so we have a funding request from the council. As you all know, uh, last month, we were designated as a community wildlife habitat by the, uh, National Wildlife Federation. We would like to purchase five street signs designating the borough as such. You can see what the street signs look like. They're metal, eighteen by twenty-four, um, sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents a piece. And that doesn't look shit. So they would go at the same five locations as the current Birdtown Committee signs or Birdtown signs are. In addition to those five signs, uh, we would like to purchase three new Birdtown signs. You're all aware that the Birdtown program has undergone some changes. There's a new sign. Birdtown Pennsylvania will supply each Birdtown with two free signs. And we can purchase additional signs for fifty dollars a piece. Um, so we would like those three additional signs so that they would also be at the same five locations as the current Birdtown signs. And then as long as we're ordering street signs, um, the Shade Tree Commission would like three more Tree City USA signs. Right now, we only have two at both ends of Butler Avenue. Uh, if we purchase three more, we can also put them on Bristol Road, Tammany Avenue and Keery Avenue, and we would have all three of these signs in all five locations.
And, um, I just wanted to mention that, you know, the, the Birdtown is a committee that works hard and does a lot of work and doesn't have a budget. So, um, you know, the, the reason this is coming to you is for that reason.
Can I get a quick question? I, I'm not, uh, like, familiar without seeing them again on some of the locations, exactly where the signage is, like, uh, Bristol, I guess, of Tammany.
As you come into the borough on Bristol Avenue, uh, there's a Birdtown sign.
Is more, they're all residential areas, I guess. I guess my concern is that it might be a lot of signage kind of in a residential area. You know?
I know.
I'm not sure of how it would look, that's all.
It's all, I mean, there are already Birdtown signs in all five locations.
Okay.
And there are Tree City City signs on Butler Avenue.
So are they on a, uh?
Yeah, they're on metal posts, right?
They're on metal posts. Now, there are a couple of the metal posts, it could fit a third sign, but some of the metal posts have New Britain Borough at the top.
Mm-hmm.
So we might also want to consider about new poles for all five locations. You know, a nice wooden post with all three signs on it would be nice, but.
You got a height issue when it comes to street signs. So that nobody walks into them, so you gotta keep them up.
Yeah, I'm assuming, you know, we get the signs and then, uh, you know, we'd be up to grind to place them and make sure they're placed there.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't even have to stack them all on one. I, I prefer stacking them out because people read them that. When you stack them all on one pole, people don't take the time to read it, especially when you're driving by.
It's just that how many signs do we really need? I mean, one, I mean, with CBC, we were discussing at one point, you know, trying to minimize and get rid of some of the signage that we have around here. Um, because there's so many signs along, you know, along Butler Avenue. So, I mean, it's not that I'm opposed to these kinds of signs. I think they're, I think the Birdtown signs are really pretty and I like the fact that we're in town and all that and stuff, but I just want to make sure that we're not overdoing it with the signage. Can we, um, maybe think about a way to like create a, I know there are some talented woodworkers to create some kind of little thing that has all of the signs on that makes it look, um, inviting and artistic and.
That's a good idea.
Instead of just a sign on a pole. Like, I, that might be more aesthetically pleasing, get a sign on a pole. And then you look and be like, oh, wow, New Britain has all of these things? That's awesome.
Something along the lines that's a good thing to also be used to some degree as a, as a means of advertising, if that's.
Exactly. Well, we have, we have the one, um, kiosk at the, um, the one, uh, island. And that would be a really nice place, I think, if some of the, I just think we have to be careful with Long Butler Avenue having too many sticks up in the, you know, metal sticks with a sign on it. So we're gonna probably make it look nice. Yeah, I think that you can make it look nice.
John, if you can give us some idea of what, what footprint or what shape they have to be in, in height and width and so on, then.
Yeah, what Lauren's talking about, you need more room, um, and, you know, coming in off of two oh two in either direction would have the room to make. You see where they put the rotary signs and all that kind of stuff, they stack them all together.
They're next to the welcome sign.
Yeah, and that's always a great thing. Where you run into an issue on that is if you did it down Tammany or did it at Keely, because there you're going into somebody's front yard trying to recreate that. So then you go back to stacking them on a, on a sign. And after, I, I think this country's going to sign USA. I mean, everybody's putting signs up. The, the thing that you want to get out of the signs is that people notice them and recognize them. These are distinctive, they will be recognized. I'd always like to sort of stagger them out so people, it catches their eyes. You stack three of them on a pole, try driving by sometime and looking at something like that. Your eye will catch one, it won't catch the others.
Do they make flags?
Yeah, you treat, Tree USA has flags.
Because we had the, um, the light posts designed that there could be a flag hanging down from, like, from the lights. So instead of. Yeah, so I'm just thinking that instead of having.
You're talking about one hanging out like you see. Yeah, they hang out and they, they go in a square and hang in that.
Or, um, long banners.
Yeah, banners.
Yeah, the, um, the lights that we put in at, or we had them put in at the, um, at the apartments. Um, that they are designed that they can have a flag hanging, and I just think that.
Are they, so as a caveat on that one, they actually have a flag hanging in to put their own signs up on those. Like, their own flag up on those, um, unless they're not supposed to be putting on, if they're supposed to be ours, I don't know. But I just, I, I don't know who actually owns them, but right now there are permits for them to put signs in.
The signs are owned by the community. I mean, the, the lights are owned by the community.
The posts, okay.
Yeah, so the, they have the right. But what Lauren's talking about is you get these, I mean, they're all over the place. We did them in Hatfield for, um, hero banners.
Yeah, that's how those lights are designed, yeah.
No, the, you can't hang one telephone pole unless you own them. We took streets, we, we did it with all the, um, parking lot lights that we have and did them off of that, which is always a great thing to do, too. You, you gotta watch it if they're too close to the road because they do stick out twenty-four inches, you know? So there's all, there's all sorts of different stuff, but, you know, to answer Peter's thing, I mean, we, we can take a look at it and sit down with these guys.
I, I wonder if maybe we can approve the signs and then we can, um, look at a way to, that we can all agree on to display them. So we're kind of in agreement that we don't just want to stick them in poles, but let's look, let's purchase the signs and then let's.
You gotta get them first, yeah.
Look at how we can do this.
Yeah, and Tom's right, I mean, he's trying to put them in every road entering into the borough, which it should be. I mean, people coming into the borough, anyone will know it. Now, you guys have done a great job with us, so.
If we could do a nicer way or just play the, I think that would be.
I think the wildlife group needs to get a hold of the Birdtown group and find out where they get their signs done for cheaper.
It's national, that's.
I know. There's more writing on the wildlife one, right? Is that what they're gonna say? But, uh, but the, the, you know, I mean, when I drive around, your eyes catch them, you know? Maybe it's just because I know about them and all of a sudden I see the Birdtown or I see the Tree City USA.
And I like when I go to a different community, I'm like, oh, I'm in that town, so.
So you get the stickers every year?
What's that?
The Tree City, do you get the stickers every year that you're, no?
Yeah, we, there's, the one on Butler Avenue has three years, which is a sticker.
Yeah, it should have, it should get stickers every year, no? Every year you renew, you get stickers, we would get flags, I used to get hats. Never give hats away, but the flags we get.
We haven't seen them.
No?
No.
Who does the application?
Samantha probably did, yeah.
No, they don't. We're probably harboring and then, yes, we used to have to go around putting the stickers up.
Maybe, yeah.
You know, on the signs, it would tell you what year that you were a member and how many years you've been doing it. Okay. We'll find them.
All right, uh, any more discussion on?
You got it, hand back.
May I make a remark, please?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
I'm Jane McGroarty, and I have been the liaison for the National Wildlife Federation. And actually, the sign cost was kind of a special deal for us because they did not make the sign in the size that we asked for. They made either a smaller one or a larger one. However, they're going out of their way to make the sign that we asked for. These signs do represent a whole lot of work on a whole lot of people, so I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
One other thing related to Steve's talking about, I hadn't been at the dinner. I just wanted to bring it up, it's something to think about. I met with Bob Harvey, one of the Bucks County Commissioners at that dinner, and he talked about coming to various council meetings around the county. And I thought that at some point in time, when I asked him about it, you know, had he been to New Britain yet? And I don't think he had. And I was thinking that I would at some point reach out to him and ask him if he would be willing to attend a New Britain Borough Council meeting and whether or not there was any specific subjects that, you know, we might like to have him touch upon. I was talking to him kind of specifically about, you know, what, if anything, the county could do to help from a standpoint of businesses, both bringing new businesses in, keeping the ones that we have, you know, what kind of support could we get, anything along those lines. So again, I'm just throwing it out there that I would like to reach out to him at some point in time, see if there's an opportunity to get him on our schedule and his. Um, so if it's something that council would be willing to consider, I'd very much like to reach out to him some point soon. And like I said, try and find the time on his calendar that meets up, obviously, with our council meeting.
I agree with Jim, I think it would be, you know, you're valuable for us to hear.
Going back to the signs.
I was gonna say, do we need to make it? Yeah, I need a motion, just for the record, since we have a motion on the signs.
Yeah, and I had one more comment. Um, yeah, I think it's, it's great to have the signs, it makes really good impact, but along the lines with interest in sort of how to be laid out, um, I think it might be nice i- if we think we're gonna make kind of a significant impact at certain properties to, to let those, uh, property owners know a little bit ahead of time. You know, especially if it's two, three new signs, it might be, you know, something they'd be interested in knowing ahead of time.
Yeah.
I mean, I think once we acquire the signs, then it's up to the bird to decide how to display it. I don't think the committee really. Gets away with that.
We're following along on these signs, Adam.
Can I, a motion to, yeah, a motion of purchase, of approval of purchase, I'll go move second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The answer is none. To your.
Thank you.
Discuss on, Mr. Harvey. Um, I think any of us should, you would perhaps coordinate it and we should let you know of what questions or issues you would like, we would like to hear from the county. Uh, this is an opportunity for any problems, discussions, things we think the county wants to do or could help us do, to bring up and, uh, so we won't be coming in spouting things that are not of interest to us.
And I can follow up to the normal thing and just send, send out an email to everybody and say, hey, look, you've got a list of things that you would like me to talk about, and narrow it down to one or two. And again, try and as quickly as possible, try and get your, uh, schedule that works for us and him. And again, try and as quickly as possible, try and get your, uh, schedule that works for us and him.
The next on the list is, we have the two resolutions. Yeah, consider the adoption of Resolution 2022 dash ten, Darch, Audubon, Pennsylvania, Birdtown update. And do you want to briefly get with that spell?
Yes, please.
That's the other reason I'm here. So these are two resolutions that aren't new resolutions. They're just revised versions of resolutions that already exist. About a month ago, I sent you all a four-page status update on the Birdtown program. So you know that the Birdtown program has undergone some significant changes. When we became a Birdtown in 2013, the Birdtown initiative was part of Audubon, Pennsylvania. Audubon, Pennsylvania doesn't exist now. Audubon PA merged with Maryland, Washington DC Audubon, and they now call themselves Mid-Atlantic Audubon. The Birdtown program died a slow death when it was with PA Audubon. The Birdtowns themselves, and there are quite a few of them, continued at the local level, but with less and less support from PA Audubon. And when Mid-Atlantic Audubon was formed, they let it be known that they can no longer support the Birdtown program. So there's a new conservation entity, Birdtown Pennsylvania, that now is in charge of the Birdtown program under the auspices of the Audubon, Pennsylvania Audubon Council. So we just need to change the resolutions. The one that council passed in 2013, designating us as a Birdtown, and then the one in 2018, which established our Birdtown Committee, just to take out the references to Audubon, Pennsylvania and substitute references to Audubon or Birdtown, Pennsylvania. Other than that, there's no significant difference in the...
True, basically, housekeeping, your situation.
So going to the bigger conglomerate, does it give you any funding opportunities?
Yes. We've had some sizable private donations, but also the Pennsylvania Audubon Council has agreed to become our fiscal agent. And Birdtown Pennsylvania is actually owned by the Pennsylvania Audubon Council now. So, yeah, there's funding and I've been part of a group that we've called ourselves the Birdtown Working Committee, a working group through the past couple of years, putting this all together. And it's actually on much stronger footing. We're expanding, there are new towns that want to become Birdtowns. We're in much better shape than...
I hope that draws more, because I know when Hatfield looked at it, it wasn't strong enough for them to even want to do it. There was too much confusion, no guidance.
No, it's much more organized. If you go on the website sometimes, it's very impressive.
Good. Congratulations, that's good.
Any other discussion on the first notes? All right, hearing none, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022 dash ten and 2022 dash eleven for consideration. Second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All right. The last, the next item, rather, is consideration of Central Bucks Regional Department, the Police Department Traffic Funding Request. Amanda, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Uh, so on March seventeen, the chief not presented a list of four items that are all related to traffic and highway safety because traffic and issues are similar across all three boroughs. So this was something that he thought was a good time to make this request. He's also chose to make this request right now outside of the traditional budget period because we, all the municipalities are getting their ARPA, their federal stimulus money of this year and next, or last year and this year. So everybody's getting that. And now the final federal ruling came in in January that pretty much allows municipalities to use that money for anything, including public safety. So the chief sat down with Corporal Hilton, who is the traffic official, and they put together a list of four items that they felt were important to ask for using this money and using it outside of their traditional budget capital request because there's other items on that capital plan that are basically more important long-term than these specific items. So that's why he's asking for these outside of that. Had the municipalities not gotten that ARPA money, who knows when we would have been able to, he would have been able to make this request. So he's asking for a speed and display trailer, which will show, you can do speed studies on it, traffic counts. It'll show people's speeds as you drive by. There's also the ability to hook a keyboard onto it and use it as, like, signage if need be. The one currently that they have is sitting at the Public Works Department dry rotting. It's over fifteen years old and does not work at all, so it's just hanging out as basically spare tart and garbage that goes some route right now. So they'd be able to use this one for, for events and for speed studies and reports and things like that. And I was, our public safety has asked for several speed studies, so it's just another piece of equipment that we can use for speed studies. I just asked for the chief to run another one for me for a different reason. So it's a tool that could be used for not just our speed studies, our public safety, and I keep asking for, but also to borrow for events and things like that, too. Additionally, he's asking for a license plate reader system that'll go on the back of a car. Right now, there is one of them already, and they're able to even search us for specific license plates or just as they're driving, it scans license plates. So the example the chief gave that night was that there was a gentleman with dementia who took the family's car and they were able to program the license plate into that system and find him very, very quickly just by dragging around and be able to read that, so that they initially find, like, warrants and things like that related to whatever you can find on license plates. Not sending returns, sorry. So you have that option, so there's a lot of different uses for that system. Additionally, then, they're also asking for three laptop computers for their cars. So the officers are in their cars all, the whole entire shift, they're working twelve-hour shifts. The computers, these are places that are over five years old. So we would be giving computers to our officers to, for them to do all their reports and everything. And they're writing their reports all the time. Their reports have to be done before they're, before they can leave their shift. So if they're not done for one reason or another, then we're paying them overtime because they're guys that are in the office and do them as well. So they would, those would go in three different cars as well. And then an additional tracker unit that gets installed and mounted on one of the patrol cars to use for speed details, so they can follow cars or overtake the vehicle to get a certified speed. So that way, when they take them, write tickets and take them to court, that holds up better. So the total bill on what he's asking is forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-one. And then it was broken down, the request is broken down by percentage per our contract. So initially, the request is eight thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-six cents would be our portion of that full bill. However, in discussions with the chief and other people, I do want to make a, kind of go off of that and talking to finance, making finance is also discussing this because this is money that we wouldn't have otherwise. And this might be a nice time to, a lot of municipalities are giving the money to the police departments for different uses. And since this is something that benefits all of the boroughs and is a good thing and we can use it, too. My recommendation would actually be to give, to earmark of our ARPA money, we have over three hundred and ten thousand and change total. So I would recommend offering ten thousand five hundred and earmark that specifically for the three, purchase of the three computers. That way, that goes straight to our officers and those officers that are on the road are immediately getting a benefit. Because the other three items are great, but by giving the new computers to our officers and going above and beyond, we're giving the tools to our officers to be able to succeed and do their jobs better and protect our community and serve our community much better. And I think it's also a nice goodwill gesture to the police department as well to say, we want our officers to be able to do their jobs and we want them to look for the best things possible. So that is why I'm recommending we actually offer ten thousand five hundred instead of the eight thousand eight hundred and then the other two boroughs get on board and purchase the rest of the stuff.
Amanda, what happens to the computers that are replaced? Are they donated or refurbished or phoned away or?
Usually they're destroyed because at that point, they've been used twenty-four seven for over five years. They're probably pretty dead and slow at that point. Because it's not like us who, we might only use our computer for an hour or two a day. Our personal computers, we're not using them for work. These guys are using them twenty-four hours a day over the course of the two shifts that are working.
Thank you.
There's not a lot of life left.
I will clarify for Amanda, the three laptops will be put in cars to, the cars with LPR, if we get the second LPR, it takes up a lot of computer data, a lot of computer speed, a lot of memory. The car that caught, located a missing person in Goldstown was actually found near New Burton on Butler Avenue. So, but the computer, it took a second for the computer, because it's a slower computer. So the price tag for these computers is high because of the bigger computers, these three cars would have the two LPRs and our highway safety car, which has Buttercutter software. So really, they're, they're specific to three specific cars in our agency that use a lot of computer, a lot of computer speed, a lot of computer memory in the police vehicle, so.
So do I understand it right, it's like five hundred dollars per computer that we're sort of...
Thirty-five hundred a computer.
Oh, so it'd be eighty-eight hundred plus ten thousand?
No, no.
I'm getting...
It would be, so the, we would earmark, we'd offer the ten thousand five hundred and we'd ask the chief to earmark it to purchase just the three computers. So we'd ask, we'd give more above and beyond what they asked for, but we earmark it for just the computers so that he couldn't use it to buy anything else in the world. We'd have to use it to buy the computers.
So that would come from the other municipality money if it's...
The remaining amount of money, yeah, the remaining, the other amounts for the other three items, the other municipalities would then split that bill.
One quick question, if you even know Captain, and it's not critical, the speed trailer that Amanda was talking about, is that something that any of the police vehicles can pull or do...
Now they can, yeah, because they all have, we all have tow packages in all of the vehicles.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, currently, you know, I, I just heard about this at the last police commission meeting. And I was a bit concerned about a request for additional funding coming off budget cycle, you know, and certainly asked, well, you know, why wasn't it in the last budget and something we could consider then? Or why not wait till the next year? So it will be, you know, helpful funding for the traffic details. And, you know, although we, we really have to be diligent all the time considering, you know, how the borough stands in terms of our income, we, we just increased taxes this last year and we have to be alert to that at all times, how much we're, we're funding and we have to be vigilant not to spend more than is necessary. It is true in this case, due to funding related to the COVID incident, we do have substantial additional funding coming in. And this is, the proposal is quite a small portion of that, so.
We still could have three hundred thousand dollars that we could use. None of that money is earmarked yet, so we do have over three hundred thousand dollars, which would be a huge chunk to go to any other project that honestly, giving the police department as a goodwill jester and help our officers, ten thousand five hundred dollars is nothing compared to that whole amount of money.
With that, I do support it this one time, but I would prefer to see such requests come in the annual budget in the future.
Which makes sense, obviously, he's, the chief has said, you know, if this money wasn't available, hadn't been available to be used for basically anything at this point, this request would not have come right now. So I guess the motion on the table would be a motion to approve allocating ten thousand five hundred dollars from the New Burton Borough ARPA funds earmarked specifically for the purchase of the vehicle laptop computers for the chief's request.
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Although it does involve me to pay more than we need. All right, resident remarks. And hearing none, the next item, no adjournment. You have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And the second down there, all in favor, signify by saying aye.